Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a little bit of business statement. It's not on your agenda that needs to be taken care of. And Julie? Would you like to?
I already did it before.
Oh, you already did it?
Yeah.
Great. Who will answer this one?
You've got to do the pledge by yourself.
Last month's meeting.
It was none.
There's none. Skip by that.
Yeah, I gave them to you. I'm going to get them next week.
Yep.
All business, there's none. First order of business is, a law office for Aubrey Russell. There you are. That office is at. Thomas Pleasant Street.
You shouldn't say unknown.
Do you have any questions?
Do you plan on having a sign of any kind?
I do. I just actually submitted my sign application. About a three and a half foot by six foot sign.
And will it be attached to the building or a freestanding sign?
Currently, a freestanding sign.
Did you hear back from any of the letters, Fred?
I got some. Didn't hear back from any problems, any issues. No, no, no issues.
Eventually, we'll entertain a motion if the application is complete. And we'll go through the review of that process. I'll leave it at that.
We don't need a copy of the sign application to go along with this, look?
I would think that's a difference altogether. And I think, Fred, you can issue that permanent grant to put a sign.
For the sign?
Yeah, I just got the application today.
Okay.
As long as it meets town requirements. There's no need to come in front of us for it.
That's correct.
I'll make a motion that the application is complete. Does that precede the next?
All in favor? All right, we'll go line by line. Location, name, and address and phone number is located on here. Correct?
Yes.
Applicant's property, name and address and phone number. Proof of legal interest. Indeed, with some business sales. Legal interest in flooding properties. None was given. Attachments for butter in the list. Was included. Description of project proposed. Really, you should just go. Going to be continuing as it is now, correct? It's a, it'll be a legal office downstairs and a apartment above.
That's correct.
Where it's a two-family apartment.
Correct.
Land, is land surveyed and that attached?
The only picture I had of it was when I-
Yeah, that's not required here. It's an existing building.
And acres, not of anything, amount of acreage should be developed.
Correct.
Current use of the property. That was.
Apartments.
Apartments. And it's going to basically stay the same. Is property in a flood zone?
No.
Land stream, no?
No.
Is property on an aquifer?
No.
No. This wall doesn't really pertain to anything. Says an estimated cost list.
Right, correct.
Gross floor area to be developed, it actually doesn't apply. Going to use the existing floor, correct?
That's correct. So you'll be leaving it the way the first floor apartment is for your office space?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Percentages of structures and parking listed. And it said you, you had ten spaces were available.
What is that?
Six. And that would be two for the upstairs apartment. For the clients you have that come in during day.
That's correct. We usually don't have more than one person there at a time.
And the water sewer supply was listed and that's ten. This plot for all utilities, eastments and rightaways. This is not applicable, I don't believe.
Correct.
Number of parking spaces is six. Erosion control plan, that's existing, so I don't think there's really anything to do with that. You're not planning on changing anything, taking out asphalt or making big burns?
She said she's going to do a thousand dollar course of landscaping.
Yeah, it's going to make it look pretty.
Look pretty for us.
Yes, there's some dead trees I'd like to take care of and, you know, yeah, just clean up the yard.
Yeah, those trees are hiding that building.
Yeah.
No waivers are required on this, Fred?
No, not asking for it. Don't think we need any.
Project requires state grants, I don't believe that's an issue there. Any questions? Very straightforward. I'll just be in a motion to accept this. Just approve it. And approve it. Make a motion to be approved if the application is complete. All in favor? Passes.
Thank you.
Welcome to the committee.
Thank you very much.
You all set?
Thank you.
Application number two. This is French. I heard. I think I'm going to take this application and go through it. Item by item. Anybody want to agree with that? Stay in motion? All understand? Make a motion to go through the application line of order?
Let's second that.
All in favor? Passes. Any amendments? We've got the name of the applicant, which is William French Union. He lives at Ellen Street here in McCannan Falls. And he recently bought the property at seven North Main Street. It used to be the pub, I believe. Five is the pub, actually. I don't know, it's recorded incorrectly, but it's five is the pub. Seven is the Chinese restaurant. I purchased both of those. Plus the parking area that's the fence on Water Street. Okay. And this is just for five?
It's just for five. Seven's supposed to stay, as far as I know, the Chinese people are going to continue making Chinese food. I haven't talked to them yet because they went to China for a month, I guess. I have to discuss the fact that I'm a new landlord.
A surprise. The applicant's name is the same. So we'll make a correction that's noted that that's five North Main Street. On number two, on the applicant's form. Not seven. Number four, name and address of the person, that again, that's Mr. French. From Ellen Street, McCannan Falls. Number five's the legal interest. Does he have a property, he is the owner of that. On five North Main. And does he have a property adjoining that? And that's number six, and he does, which is three North Main Street. Which used to be the old dental office, I believe.
Yeah, there was a dental office and some other things. The bar used to be a place that sold cask in back in nineteen something.
And seven North Main Street, which is the Chinese restaurant. Number seven. The attached list of the butters, I believe everybody has notified.
Did you hear back from anybody, Fred?
Didn't hear anything. Nobody responded with letters or calls or anything, so.
Okay. And the attachment is, is this six of butters that were notified. And there's no copies of anything that was letters that were received back from those individuals. That's number eight. Number nine is, the nature of the project is to make senior living studio apartments. He wishes to make seven units in that old, the old pub.
It's going to change the plan, correct? Is that staying at seven or is it changing?
Well, he's asking for seven, as it is right now. And the square footage is six hundred and, sixteen hundred and seventy-two square feet.
Will, do you want to go through the application or if there's a particular concern, should it be drawn up at that point?
Yes.
To which?
Yes.
Our ordinance book, page eighty-five, multi-family development, says no more than four dwelling units may be contained in any structure. Does that apply to this?
It would, but the building is, has sprinkler system in it, which the state requires for any building units over four. But I believe I'm right on that. Am I right on that, Mark? And being sprinkled gives them the opportunity to have no.
Even though our ordinance says that no more than four dwelling units may be contained in any structure?
Yeah, I don't know.
Seems like our ordinance would-
It would.
Be the guide here.
Sure. It's open for discussion, it's discussable. There's also, also in our ordinance, there's a place, section K, I believe, page one oh eight. Says something about square footage per unit. It's on page one oh six of the code book. It's in K, which is minimum standards of space and occupancy. And number one is, the total area in every dwelling unit shall contain at least two hundred and fifty square feet of total floor area. With an additional hundred and twenty-five square feet for each occupant over two. If you did the math on that, excluding hallways and exits and entrances, those seven units would be a little less than two hundred square feet per unit.
Yeah. So is the number, two hundred and fifty square feet, that's assuming double occupancy of each unit?
No.
No, singly?
No. No, that says state for. Yes, it does, it states for two. But there's no, there's no wording that says it's also for, it's less for one. So that's the minimum square footage. I would assume. Now you guys have some problem.
And he has, he asked for that waiver, if you look further into the application too. Number twenty-three.
Again, will have any concerns?
If it, if it does make any difference, it, there are egress, there's a handicap ramp that goes around the backside of the Chinese restaurant. It's got an exit to the front of the building. Each apartment is going to have egress window, am I correct?
Right down there, six, five, three foot windows.
And the building is sprinkled, I'm sorry?
Is this first floor and second floor?
Just one floor.
It's all first floor.
Just one floor.
Maybe we should hear more from you as to what your plan is.
Well, the reason I'm looking at doing this is that, well, number one, I'm a landlord, I've been for some time, twenty-some odd years. And I'm always being asked by people who are like senior citizens for rent. And they can't afford anything very expensive, like under six hundred dollars is what to look at. And because they're on fixed income and so forth. And so I'm trying to find a way of making the building make money for me, so that I get some income from it, because I'm a senior citizen. And also provide some housing. And the state wants you to be at five, five sixty-seven, I think is their number, per month for the elderly. And my math comes out to five sixty-five if it's a seven unit. I go over six hundred if I drop to six. Or if I had had four, then I, I would be back in, in looking at, you know, just any old person coming in. Because I, people on the senior citizens right out the door, they wouldn't be able to afford it. You know, if they're on social security, fixed income.
Is this a private, it's going to be a private pay or is it going to be any subsidies involved with this at all?
There may be, there may be, well, I have to allow them as a landlord. If somebody says I have section eight, I have to allow that to come in. I ran an ad for about a week in Craigslist, just to see if there was interest. And I said, you know, this is like going to happen in the spring. And explained what I was doing and what was the amenities for and so forth. And I've already got eight people that want to be on the waitlist for it. So there's, there's definitely a need and an interest in, in the area for having some place for elderly people to house themselves and not, you know, be worried about the gas bill or electric bill or whatever. So that's what I'm looking at.
So this is all included, utilities and everything?
All utilities included, yes.
I'm having a hard time envisioning seven units in that little building.
What are the sizes of the units that you're going to be creating, roughly?
There is, there's five that are going to be right around a hundred and sixty square feet. And two that are going to be a hundred and eighty-five square feet. That's what it looks like. So it's, the rooms are bigger than, like, I started out wanting to do a rooming house and for the same purpose, you know, fifty-five or over rooming house. But every insurance company I've talked to is like, we won't insure you for a rooming house. Which I thought would be a nicer thing, because you'd have, you know, a community area and a community kitchen kind of thing. And people would get to, you know, talk to each other and so forth rather than having them in separate apartments. But the insurance companies go, oh, there's too many people, we'll trip and do things and we won't touch that little ten-foot pole. But an apartment with the same people in it, they have no issue. So again, the normal insurance companies run in the world, you know.
So when you say a hundred and sixty square feet, what are the sizes of the rooms? Because you got a bedroom and kitchen?
The kitchen's, the kitchen, it's one room. It's going to be called a zero bedroom, is what they call them when you look at it. So it's a studio apartment. So you've got a kitchenette area. And you've got room for your, for your bed, probably a chair, television, stuff like that. And so you're looking at someplace between ten and twelve by eight and a half, nine feet, something like that for the main room. And then there's a, most of them have fairly large bathrooms with a shower in it. And I'd be putting, you know, like handrails and things in the shower, so that there wouldn't be issues with elderly people using. In fact, I want to get showers that are one piece and have a seat in it. Because that just goes along with being older.
Those generally are a little larger too, the forty-two or forty-eight inches.
Right.
All right, both, we'll skip by nine and discuss that.
I've got one question.
Okay.
Is there enough room between the buildings for egress? From the, the drawing you have here of your layout, I can see where you intend to put your windows for egress, but is there enough room between the buildings for egress?
There's thirty inches in between the buildings, which is enough to walk, you know, comfortably out, especially if you're-
Twenty-two inch walkway is what you need.
We can request to do a walkthrough too.
Yeah.
To get a better idea.
So the fire egress is a thirty-inch window?
No, thirty inches is, is the space between the buildings. Both is the Chinese restaurant and the other building down, there's thirty-inch alleyway down.
And how big is the window?
So windows are three by six. So you've got, you've got way more than the five point seven, you have to have, or in a double hunk, so you get half of that. So you've got a three by three opening back, basically, less.
So in theory, there's three egress. There's the front entrance, the back entrance, as well as a window.
Right.
Plus being sprinkled.
Plus being sprinkled.
I'm just trying to picture an elderly person climbing out of a window.
Right.
Being one myself. How far would the drop be out of the window?
Depends on where you are, on the building.
Two feet, four feet?
Well, it's going to be more than two feet, because that would be right on the ground. Depends on where you are. The, the alleyway slopes down. I'd have to actually look and see where, where you were, but, and on the backside of the building, they're almost a story high. But the egress is also for people to come and, you know, put a ladder up to and get them out too. It's not just, you know, physically get your body out of the building.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll move on. Ten, location of the property, it's on the property map. Department of Survey, it's an existing building. They have a bakery, which is not very big lot there. Thirteen is, current use of, former use was apartment. Fourteen. Is the property within two hundred and fifty feet of High Watermark and the pond? You have a stream and it is. Is it in a special flood zone area?
No.
Wow.
Within two hundred and fifty feet of High Watermark, yes.
Yeah. And it's not, okay. And it's on the, I think it is. I think it is for the egress. At one time, it was true. Estimated cost, he's got a the legal, I think it's going to be a thousand, sewage, town roads and parking is town, the parking is actually going to be in the back?
It's going to be out to the side on Water Street is where there's a parking area.
Yeah, a lot out.
Yeah, there's a lot. Like almost a hundred foot square, basically.
It's a rear.
It's shaped, but more or less that's the side.
Stormwater structures, it's existing, water supplies to town. And totals come to thousands.
Would you be doing the plowing in the winter?
I haven't decided that yet. I've had, since I own the building behind it, I have had been, had someone doing plowing there. I have my own plow truck, but it's old, so I'm not sure if I'm going to do that or just hire it done.
But you wouldn't have someone do it?
Oh, yeah, it has to be done, yeah. It has to be done to act, well, right now, the tenants of three North Main park behind the building. I don't own behind the building. The electric company owns behind the building. But they've been doing that for years apparently, using that space as, as parking. Which was one of the reasons I wanted to purchase these two buildings, was because of the parking lot that came with it. Because that gives me a lot more leeway. If someone falls and decides to sue the electric company, like they've tried to sue the town, I, I think the electric company could just fence that off and I'd have no place for my tenants to park at three North Main. They'd be out on the street trying to park. So that was one of the reasons for having a fairly good sized lot of land that had parking. that had parking for, you know, both buildings.
How many apartments in the three? There's five in there now?
Five in Green North Main, yeah.
Is that sprinkled by any chance?
It is not. Eighteen, gross floor area against 1,672 square feet. Percentage of lot covered by the structure and parking. Of that lot, yeah, of that lot, between the Chinese restaurant and the, there's not much left, but it isn't built there. Methodist infrastructure is public.
So you just plan on gutting the interior and...
The interior's pretty much been gutted by the previous owner. He took everything out, the bar, and he loves you, the mirror wall. Oh, now he loves everything else. There are two bathrooms that are still there, one of them will be used in, for one of the units. And the other one is gonna do a coin op, so that the coin op available laundry on the premises, so people wouldn't have to go out and do that.
In addition to the seven apartments, if you're asking?
Yeah, it's just a little 50 square feet or something like that.
Is that right in the beginning?
Exactly, that's the front.
Because it's not in the diagram.
It should be there.
It's on the front, to the side.
Front, it's just a little space.
On the left.
Yeah, she goes, it's gonna be on the, actually on the right. As you go in the front door, there's a space to the right.
Any more questions?
Twenty-one, number of parking spaces. He's got 10 listed, proposes 10, and that's in the rear of the building to the attached lot. It's the attached lot, it's down Water Street. Similar to the rear of the building, just to the side of the building. There's enough land behind the Chinese restaurant to park two or three cars there. Much further than that would be on the power company.
How far is that lot down the road? Is it directly?
Lot goes to the fence, there's a stockade fence. As you go down Water Street, there's a stockade fence. The stockade fence is 80 feet long, and that's the, that's the property line on that end of it.
Okay.
Post-erosion is not applicable. And we come to 23, list of waivers being requested. He is asking for a possible reduction of square footage per dwelling unit for studio apartments.
He has modified his plan three times and submitted it to me. I've asked him to make a few corrections, just so that we can comply with state egress and laws. So it's, he realizes it's gonna be tough, we've discussed this. He may get into it and understand that seven units may not work. He may have to reduce it, but we're leaving it up to you folks to make that decision.
If it was brought down to six, how would that hurt you?
What it does is add, I think, $96 to the rent in order to maintain the same income. And it's, there's basically three things I'm looking for. I'm making an investment, which I'd like to get my money back, not with interest, just to get my money back out of it. I've made a down payment, which I'd like to get back within 10 years. And I'd like to have enough money to make it worth my while to actually go through the process of managing it. And so that's, that's what I'm looking for as a return on investing the time and money to do this. And so there's only so much room, so to speak. Seven units, I can get down to $565 a month. If I stable it, knock one off, and that has to be shared by the, by what's left, and it adds, I think it was like $96. So you're up over $600, and I'm not sure if that's gonna be too much for somebody on fixed income. I don't, I'm not positive. I know the state said that they want to be at the 565, but if you look at it, if you take one off, that's like, what, over $7,000, almost $8,000. And so that would give me practically nothing for my time.
Yeah.
Out of the years. That's why, it's just math, you know, I'm just trying to make it work and have that. I'm trying to do things that are, you know, gonna be nice. I want to do heat pumps and, you know, have air conditioning for each unit and heating for each unit, so people have control over that. I want it to be a nice place for people to live. I'm just trying to do it on the cheap and, you know, have it not something that I'd want to live in myself.
And this will, you're saying senior living, but what guarantees do we have that you're going to do that and make it senior housing?
On advertising, 55 and above, that's, that's what they consider senior housing now.
You can't really legislate when he does register, when he rents, Jerry.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want, to be perfectly honest, I'm a landlord, like I said, I've got a lot of units. I'd rather deal with seniors than to deal with, you know, kids that are either, you know, losing their job every 10 minutes or not paying or whatever. It's much better to deal with somebody who is on fixed income and pays their bills in regular time.
Any more comments on 23, the waiver?
I'm not comfortable. I think we really need to go do a walkthrough. That's what I'm thinking.
That was a walkthrough that worked. He hasn't done it yet. I'm gonna walk through it on my... What is it gonna do?
It'll give us a visual of how busy this place is to start with. And if he does have the proper egress and stuff, because under multifamilies, there's supposed to be a vegetative buffer strip no less than 25 feet wide with bushes and stuff, and some other things that...
But he can't do that, he can't recreate that with an existing building. I mean, that's been a pub, that's been a pub the last couple of times people have been in there, and it hasn't worked. None of them have worked.
None of them worked, yeah.
This is something different.
What does the ADA say for with some things for senior housing, Fred?
I've looked at it, and I couldn't find anything that was, that he's not complying with at this point.
I've actually asked Fred to check into, Angus Dogan, State of Maine, as well as federal. It all came up, why?
Yes.
There's no wheelchair requirements or wheel wits or any of that?
No, I think he was gonna allow one unit to be handicap accessible. I think that's what we discussed about.
And it does have a ramp all back.
It's got a ramp already there.
Yep.
And that ramp is plenty wide, it's four feet plus, I believe.
How steep is that ramp?
It's, it's certainly less than a 12.1, so.
Oh, excellent. I'll make a motion to accept the waiver.
I'll second it.
Discussion? We've already had it. Open for discussion?
They're very small. So the fire marshals and none of those people have any input?
It, we will have to have the fire chief walk through, as well as the electrical inspector and myself, to approve it, the final approval, once it's complete.
So the waiver can be contingent upon that?
I believe that, I would put that in there, yes.
Would you like to amend your motion? Have they amended?
I don't know if it's been voted in. It got voted in second, but not voted. So you could just make another motion and...
Let's make a motion to take this off the table, the motion.
I'll take the motion off the table.
Okay. What's there with a new motion?
Well, you could just make the motion, you accept it contingent on fire marshal, electrical, and code enforcement approval.
You got that, Julie?
I'll second it.
What are you gonna say, yeah?
No, I don't, he does.
Colin Fager. State, again?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was writing.
It's unanimous. Twenty-four is construction schedule to begin promptly. Twenty-five is licenses from state entities and stuff that says no licenses for environmental protection or main apartment transportation, unnecessary. Develop plant scale, you did location map, it's not applicable on 26. There are no easements or anything that's required, Fred?
Not that I'm aware of, I didn't see anything in the senior's deed.
Okay. Existing soil is not applicable to existing site. And site is not served public. It has public sewer, so that doesn't contain. Maybe not. Do you have a purchase agreement?
Closing happening?
Closing has happened.
Oh, yes.
I'm ready. Anybody wants to make a motion?
Make a motion to improve the application as it is.
I have a question, though, we still haven't answered, you know, more than four dwelling units. Are we gonna give a waiver for that as well? Do we need to give a waiver for that as well?
I'm not sure, wait, is that for a new multi-unit? New construction?
It doesn't say new construction, it just says multifamily development. The following apply to all multifamily developments on page 85. So do we have to give a waiver for that, too?
That's the definition of a family, like, as an individual.
Yeah, I have a question.
I would've thought the waiver would cover that.
They're allowing two-per-unit, they have a family, right?
They're not allowing two, they have a single block, they have a single person, they're turning it.
I just want to make sure we have it all proper and ordered to cover it. What if you just grant a waiver for if it wasn't more than...
For a waiver to...
Let's, or shrink the square footage.
The square footage down to 250 square feet per unit.
To seven, it becomes 199.
So doesn't that allow families of seven? Isn't that really incredible? Can that split that out? Eighty-five?
It's due?
Eight.
Stocked, that's in the... Seems to be all in the new, anything that's built new. Just talking about subdivisions as well as...
Right.
Well, mine, my copy of the book, it specifically says multifamily development H, and then it gives down the listing, and then I is subdivisions, and that's its own little thing.
But if you go previously, it's units seven.
And previous to that lines about mobile and manufactured homes.
The several parks.
Parks, yes. This is a renovation, right?
Yeah, that's right, it's not a new construction.
Would you like to see my book?
No, it's the same amount.
So my question is, to cover our books, do we need to make a waiver for that as well?
It's up to you. I mean, I think you've covered it with an allowance of decreasing the square footage, but if you want to make a waiver and allow more than four units per dwelling on this development?
So it's in black and white?
And what, Julie, what's the motion on the...
That he motioned to accept the application as it is, and then Fod seconded it.
Okay, so that's accepting the application. As complete is, do we need to make another motion after that to accept?
For approval of it?
For approval.
Yes.
Okay, so, no set? So the motions should be for approval of seven units, right? We've already done the waiver.
For the square footage.
For the square footage, say.
Now we're accept, we've modified the application, so we're accepting the application.
But do we want to do a second waiver to cover the four units versus, or seven units versus four units, so that it's stated clearly?
versus four units, so that it's stated clearly that that's what we approved, so that it doesn't come back in the future to someone saying, well, you just said you could make them smaller, you didn't say you could make more?
Yes, that's my...
So we'll approve this, and then when we go to initiate this whole application and give it approval, so that you can do this, that can contain it?
We can do it either way. Do the waiver ahead of time, we can do it after.
I, I would suggest do the waiver first.
I would think so.
Okay.
So you just have to rescind what you said?
So I'll, so I'll make a motion, we...
Rescind your motion and...
Right, rescind, rescind my own motion. The new motion would be to, to waiver the square footage and allow seven units of construction.
Motion was seconded, so it has to be voted on.
All right.
Unseconded?
Okay. All in favor of rescinding the motion? Two unanimous. Now comes the motion. Sorry.
You got it, go ahead. I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept a waiver for reduced square footage, allow seven units.
Contingent on fire marshal code and electrical.
Contingent on fire marshal codes, electrical, and bill inspection.
Sounds good.
And these are going to be single or individual occupancy, not two people, correct?
One person.
Yes.
And, and that you could, I would include that as well, yes, I think that's a good, good help, include that, it's been a help.
Yeah. You got it, Julie?
All right, so your motion to accept it?
I'd actually appreciate if you did do that, because that gives me leverage if somebody tries to bring somebody else in.
You motioned to waiver to allow seven units contingent upon fire marshal and inspection.
And electrical, and bill unexpected.
And units are for one person per unit?
Like that.
Okay, who seconds?
Looking for a second, no.
I'll second.
And discussion. Seeing, uh, a discussion through floor. Seeing, uh... Colin Fable? It's unanimous.
Good luck.
Uh, thank you. You cover the...
Your motion was only for the waiver, not to accept the application.
So we still need to...
So we need to accept the application.
We now need to accept the application, that was for accepting the waiver.
For, for approval. Thank you, Julie, keeping me sharp. I'll entertain a motion to accept and approve the application as revised.
I make a motion that we accept the application, that we approve the application as it has been revised with two waivers.
Seconded. All in favor? In the air.
There we go.
There we go.
Good luck, I'll be talking to you later.
You're welcome. Next application is Robert Clark. Ninety-four Marston Hill Road, mine, looking to create a caregiver store for marijuana.
So we haven't even created ordinances to deal with this yet, so how can we look at an application for that?
You do actually have it in your ordinance, as a primary caregiver, it's, um, one of the hospices.
Uh, yes, we do, and it allows one.
Uh, not for, I believe that's for dispensaries, it, it doesn't have a limit on primary caregiver operations, by number.
Only one registered dispensary shall be permitted in the town.
Right, and this, sorry to...
No, go ahead.
Yeah, this wouldn't be a dispensary, it would technically be a retail medical storefront underneath the main medical caregiver law.
Which we currently don't have in the ordinance.
Yeah, your, uh, your ordinance is a little bit outdated just in the jargon, but I think the idea is essentially the same, where it says primary caregiver there, and it has a limited set of rules for primary caregiver operations.
Talk to me, Bob.
Well, that was my understanding when I applied, I think it was a couple of years ago, and we were just trying to get, make you folks aware of what we wanted to do, and we've had a caregiver operation there for five years, um, so now, well, the difference is we wanna have the, the retail storefronts. That's, that is allowed by the state, and it's allowed by your ordinance.
We made it very clear that there wasn't to be any signage or any of that kind of stuff, so how can he have a store without having a typical storefront stop?
There's some...
I haven't seen anything that prohibited signage anywhere.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything. I'm sorry, Bob, where did you say the proposed development location was?
It's gonna be at three sixty Blenheim Street, on Route one twenty-one, special commercial zone.
So I don't understand, you're both submitting, obviously he gets first dibs, 'cause he's here functioning, working, so my question to you is, how do you supposedly differentiate from what he's doing and change the jargon of our thing that says only one, when you're submitting as, under your licenses of medical, the same thing he is?
So I think, uh, it's, it gets very complicated very quickly, especially with the changing laws and changing vocabulary, but I believe what they had, uh, I mean, back in twenty fourteen, I believe, was the last revision of the town use ordinance, and where they had added, uh, only one dispensary. Now dispensaries, there's only eight licenses in the entire state of Maine, uh, there's one in Auburn, one in Portland, one in Bedford, and that's a, a different registered state agency, uh, both Bob and I would not be dispensaries by definition. Yes, we would be dispensing medication, but we're not licensed as dispensaries, we're licensed as caregivers. So the state has recently, uh, is up to less than, I'd say about a year ago, they, they allowed us to, uh, operate retail medical storefronts, whereas before, we had our designated patients, so if you had a medical marijuana recommendation, you had to designate a primary caregiver, and that's where you got all your medicine from. Well, they recently got rid of that designation, so now that anybody with a medical card can go to any caregiver anywhere in the state, as long as all their paperwork's in order, so that opened up an opportunity for caregivers to have, uh, retail storefronts where they can only serve medical patients.
And when did they do this?
Uh, they recently, uh, Bob, you have an idea when they opened up that law?
Before I brought the paperwork for it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's been a while.
A few months, few months.
It's been a few months.
Uh, I was, as retail medical, I believe it was almost a year ago, when they got rid of designation.
It seemed thirty-nine.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've changed it since.
Yep.
Three times, if not four, if not four.
Yeah, multiple changes, yeah, so now we can buy canopy space instead of going by plant count, so, so we've become a big step closer to what a dispensary is.
So basically, if I get this correct, the language that we were told back in two thousand fourteen when we came up with this has been changed.
It's changed a lot.
A lot. Which means that our ordinance is obsolete.
The designations are still the same, though. Yeah, the designations, there is, uh, still a very clear designation between dispensary and caregiver, and that's why you have, there are different rules.
Yeah, they, they designated four, if not five, different groups, there's growers, and there's retailers, and then there was agriculture and testing, and, you know, they, just all the others, which didn't exist a year ago.
Yeah, and then that was gonna be my point, was back when Mr. Clark came to us, that's what the state told us, how to label it in order to come up with the ordinance, so that's why it's labeled as such. So the state has turned around and made our ordinance obsolete and our language not...
Correct. And we haven't had a chance to...
And we haven't had a chance to address it.
I think what, although I agree with you, I do believe that what Bob and I are both proposing would still fall under your rules as they're written now currently. We would be, under a primary caregiver operation, that still, we would, we would, uh, meet all those requirements as written.
With the exception, your ordinance requires that you live in the facility, which I think everybody in this room has agreed that that's a bad plan.
Uh, it actually says you may, yeah, you may. You may, you don't have to live there.
So would this always not be a retail facility?
It will be a retail store, yes.
Okay, so I'm looking at number ten on our ordinance, and it says only one marijuana retail facility shall be permitted in Town Mechanic Falls. Marijuana retail facilities are prohibited in the rural, general residential downtown business one, downtown business two, downtown business three zoning districts, and a conditional use permit shall be granted by the planning board for a meta, uh, for a marijuana testing facility in the general development, highway commercials, uh, special commercials, so on and so forth.
Yeah, I didn't, so you're reading off the new campus ordinance?
Yes.
I don't see any lines drawn through anything, so I assume this is already in the ordinance, Fred?
That's, that's correct.
All this is in the current ordinance?
This is what Zach gave me, yes.
Yes.
Just recently.
Wouldn't, uh, Fred, correct me if I'm wrong, would this go into the overall town used land ordinance? Because I just, it's not there, and that was the last amended in twenty fourteen, and then this is, I, I don't remember seeing a date on that new part.
How new is this?
Hasn't gotten into our land use ordinance.
Right, because that's to be approved by...
That's correct.
Yeah.
It's been approved by our town council to allow our planning board to make those final decisions.
Right, but still, to defend the law, it needs to be, you know, approved by the town council.
Correct.
Well, we get to address it, we send back our recommendations to them, they, and then the public has to vote on whether they're okay with what we say or not.
Thought that was resolved.
Actually, that was, that was done, that was already resolved.
By just opting in?
Yes.
Because the state don't know about...
My, the big question here is, is, that I have is, do we have the cart before the hospital? Do we have the hospital for our cart? I just wanna make sure that we are on the right path for that.
I really think so, I think, I think the ordinance is really well-written, I just been, uh, helped out Auburn with finishing their ordinance and enacting it, and we just went through our whole licensure in the city of Auburn, we had over sixty-two, uh, initial applicants, and in Auburn, what we did, rather than limiting the amount of caregivers just with a, a dead set total, like a ceiling, we did it by setback, so, so we said that, all right, we'll do it as, as much as the land allows, so everybody has to be seven hundred fifty feet away from each other, unless you're already operating when that ordinance was passed. So now, if anybody wants to come in, it's still open, Auburn opted that they'd still be open for a new caregiver to come in, but you had to, you had to be a setback of seven hundred fifty feet. I think that was a really good, um, compromise, because it, uh, for the people that said that, all right, we, we don't want just pot shops on every corner and everything like that, but, um, it still allows the caregivers to operate and to compete and to help, uh, help the tax basis of, uh, the city, because with the passage of, uh, LD three-three-five, which is coming up this next session, it will share twenty-five percent of the sales tax with the local municipality, so that means only Mechanic Falls retail operations would pay, uh, sales tax right back to the city, and those could go into the general fund. So I think it's short-sighted for us to limit one store, 'cause then you're only getting one small piece of pie, and I think caregivers will just go to other towns.
What is our current fee schedule?
Well, in here, it's, uh...
Well, if this is proposed, then...
Yeah.
But I, do we have a current fee schedule, or do we need to make one up before we do this?
Well, we don't really have anything set at this point.
So, if we allow these folks to do this, we don't even have a fee schedule to, in place to...
Well, fifteen hundred dollars for, for a dispensary, fifteen hundred dollars for caregiver, this is annually.
Right.
Fifteen hundred dollars for a cultivation facility.
Right, I'm reading, I'm reading all that, but is this proposed, or is this already etched in stone?
I believe that's what Zach had told me, that the town council had allowed you to make that final decision.
I mean, 'cause of, I read somewhere, Little Houston's getting like five thousand dollars or something.
Yeah, seventy-five hundred. I saw that too.
You know?
So, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know that the, the fee schedule's set in stone, I mean, you, you can change that number if you felt the need.
Lou, if you look at the second one, it says, um, controls and everything, if you look back to the, the last pages, it shows where it was given to the council on the fourth day of February nineteen, twenty nineteen.
What do you have, Lou, I don't have, uh, I don't have that, I just have the...
It should have been in that packet that I gave you.
Yeah.
It's at the back of it?
Yeah, it's at the back of it.
I don't have it on the back, the last thing I have is the proposed schedule.
Okay, so the council approved a fee schedule of fifteen hundred dollars per, from what I'm looking at here.
Yeah, and this was what was adopted.
And that was the end.
And then there's a... So, okay, that brings up another question, if, if they... If they approve this on the fourth day of February two thousand nineteen, then that means they approve the whole thing, correct, as it's written here?
The way I understand, the way Zach explained it to me, that, yes, they have did approve it, uh, subject to changes by the planning board.
Okay, so I'll go back to what I read before, number ten, about one, one marijuana facility shall be permitted in Town Mechanic Falls. That looks like what the council approved, if that's what you're saying.
I would say that, and it's, it's up to you if you wanna allow more, that's gonna be up to, up to the planning board.
Well, and my question too is, it says marijuana retail facilities are prohibited in rural, general residential, development downtown, um, one downtown, business two downtown, three zoning districts, so basically, it's not allowed anywhere.
That's not true, I have a special commercial law that's allowed for that, for the ordinance.
Oh, that's right, you are on a special commercial, okay?
I believe...
But that's very few.
And I believe the other one's in highway commercial.
Yes, it is, I believe, point said.
Correct.
Additional use permit shall be granted by the planning board.
I've read this like four times, and I s-... I've read this like four times, and I still get more out of it every time.
I'm the same one.
Me too.
I can't wait to go to the new rules and regulations, because I know ours is so outdated.
Yeah, and they're changing again probably at the end of this year, or recreational, they're adding recreational.
Well, if we can get this set, we can get the medical side set.
This is a good baseline, absolutely.
Then, then the rest of it is gonna come naturally.
Yeah, it's pretty much already written, you know, with all the retail licenses and cultivation.
There was somewhere in here, and I can't find it right now, that at one point, it gives the codes officer sort of permission to issue permit. I think all of this stuff should be conditional use and should have to come before the planning board.
I don't disagree with that at all.
Yeah, neither do I.
Take it off my, take it off my hands, please.
I think, I think that puts Fred out there to be shot.
He's already been shot, I know.
Exactly, he doesn't need that. But I can't seem to, I thought I had written it down, the line in that, and I can't see the line.
I read it too, also. Fred has, has it underlined, I go for a fad.
So we really can't...
That would be under six. Number six, six C. The use permit may be granted by the code officer for a registered primary caregiver operation in the rural, general development, highway commercial, special commercial, general industrial zoning districts. And then it follows up by certain requirements.
I think that should be a conditional use issued by the planning board.
Yeah, I had it already scoped out.
Okay.
Bring that up. Well, the thing is, is, we want to continue with Mr. Clark, and then we'll, we'll want to miss the fair after.
How do we do that, though, if these are just tentative ordinances and they haven't been voted on or accepted?
They've been voted on.
By the council?
Yes. This was written on February 3rd, and everything else is approved on the 4th.
So this little bit of what they condensed down, that Fred said is what they approved on April 4th, or adopted on April 4th, does not include all of this in here.
This is what they approved. This packet right here is what they approved at the council meeting. And it has the place for the signatures where they signed it. And I'm sure that they have signed one in.
Let me, my opinion is that what the signature's for says they're okay with what's here. This doesn't include this here. It doesn't go back to this. It just says the purpose, the title, the definitions, their use, and the cultivation, and then their signature. It does not apply back to this.
You're mistaking what's written in our code book with the new codes that are...
No, this says 2019, what Fred gave me, February 2019. February 4th, 2019. And doesn't take any of this into play.
As I stated before, February 4th, 2019. These were the proposed changes, and this is the redacted part that was approved. This was done on February 3rd. So this was what was proposed, and this was what got passed.
What I'm looking at are two totally different things.
You're absolutely correct.
The one that's going to get their signature on, or had their signature on it, has to do with cultivation of marijuana for personal use on it. This one does not, that I have this copy of.
You're absolutely right. This one's dated 2014, these half a dozen pages.
Yeah.
And then the council with the...
Adult use...
The adopt, the adopted, was adopted the fourth day of February 2019. There's just these two, couple of pages here.
Yeah.
Is it, what, does it include these two?
The way I understood it, when Zach presented this to me just last week, that what they adopted refers back to what was proposed in 2014. Those other pages.
And then...
That's why he gave the whole package to me.
Okay, so the places on the original ordinance that have been stricken or line drawn through them...
Correct.
Is what, part of the changes for February 2019.
Exactly.
Okay.
And some underlined that remain the same. And the sum was crossed out to the center, which would be stricken.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Lou. You're welcome. And like with the number six, we'll have to send that back to them, if I'm correct, right? And tell them we want that changed.
If you want, if you want that changed, and anything else you might want changed.
I agree with that, Lou.
Does this say, I don't know if it's on the...
Yes, well, Lou, I've actually read it. It was number six. Was it number six?
It was actually number 10.
Number 10.
It's the same, it's the same page, it has all the proposed scheduled fees.
So the question...
In the font too, so you can't hardly read it.
Exactly. It's not made for the eyes.
Well, it's all that underline that really throws your eye away. Do we want to proceed forward, is my question?
Yes.
Just a suggestion. It's been two and a half years, guys.
I realize that.
The way this is written, it keeps saying a medical, a marijuana facility. It doesn't say the marijuana facility. So it leaves a little wiggle room if you want to create it.
It, it does. It does.
So we owe it to this gentleman here to deal with his permit, which fits underneath the current ordinance. Take care of this, then.
Well, it does and it doesn't, because he wants to expand now into a realm that this goes into.
No, all we're, all we're talking about tonight is the medical marijuana permit. That's all I've asked for.
That's all he's, he has a letter of intent that dates back to 2017, unbelievable.
Now, since we approved it back then, do we have to approve it again?
Did we approve, we didn't. We didn't approve any...
At the time, we just got a caregiver's license. We were the first and only legal folks in town to, we got that permit.
Yes, I remember that.
Now, what you're doing now, you, you deliver, is that right?
Yep, we meet people in gas stations and all of that stupid stuff.
What you wanted to do, you wanted, you wanted to come to you.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, have a full line of products, and, you know, now we've got the track and trace system from the state. So that way, we're standing in front of a computer register, and we can, you know, keep track of the people that we're selling to, to make sure they aren't, you know, overbuying and things like that, so.
Can you explain that, Bob, the, the track and trace system?
Basically, go ahead.
I understand what it is, but explain it to everybody so they can understand what you're talking about.
Yeah, basically, we, well, now we can buy a license that will allow a certain number of plants or canopy space. In other words, we could tell them we're gonna grow X number of square feet. But each plant will have an individual barcode, so we have to buy a sensitive printer, and we have to buy the code from the state, and they send us the, or the state's designated professional group for this. And they send us a barcode, which we print out and put on the plant, and then that's tracked all the way through the sale. So that way, they know if something should get through, and somebody got ill, like the pig poop on the spinach a couple of years ago, that's how they can trace that back. It's just like, you know, every apple, there's a little sticker on it that tells you what orchard it came out of, so. So we, we, involved in that is everybody that's gonna have a legal operation in the state, well.
Might add a little bit to that. It'll also show what that product was sold for, how much sales tax was paid, and where that sales tax went. So by keeping it, you'll be able to see through a track and trace system, when product is sold in Mechanic Falls, what portion of money will be going directly to the local municipality.
It, it's like a UPC code or...
Exactly, yeah.
Or one of these other codes that just tracks everything wherever it may go.
Yep.
And the state, and the state gives that to you?
Yeah, we can buy it.
It has a contract with a third party, I don't even know if the name is...
Bio, uh...
BioTrak?
BioTrak.
BioTrak, yes. So this is a company the state contracted with, and we have, you know, basically in our own facility, we have the ability to request the number of tags we need and register them with the state, print them out, and put them right on the plants. This is the direction that I think everybody should be going in, I think is the right thing. You know, we, we do voluntarily, we do our own testing and things like that, but...
And this will be required.
To be more regulated and bring this to a more professional level, that's...
To answer one of your questions, and this comes from Shelley from AvCog, the applica, applicable law, and it says that municipalities may not prohibit or limit the number of registered caregivers.
But what about storefronts? Just because you can't limit the caregivers, can you limit the amount of storefronts the caregivers have?
What's the, Bob, what's the definition between, difference between a caregiver and what you're applying for today?
It's called a caregiver store, so I think it's really just that you have a retail front. So I, I don't really know beyond that. I mean, the plant limits are the same, the fees are the same, the requirements for track and trace are the same. I don't really know.
So it's basically the same thing, except there's more, there's been more focus on it.
There's a little advertising, you have a public presence, this is my understanding of the difference, so.
It gives us a safe place to conduct our business, rather than gas stations and, and it also allows us to have a face, you know, so when someone wants to come in and see me and, you know, try out my medical products, that I'll be the one working the store.
Kind of makes it a lot more legal than...
It's, in fact, we're just trying to, rising tide raises all ships. Rising tide raises all ships, we're just trying to bring it all above board to be more on par with the rest of the country that's already gone in this direction.
So if you read the very last line on this, from AvCog, it says, uh, some of these issues, and they're talking about this whole thing in general, some of these issues will probably be resolved at some point in the legislature or in court. The town could zone medical marijuana retail stores to particular districts, though.
We're already doing that.
Okay.
We've already done that. It's, there's only two places we're looking in town that they can be...
It also says, however, to make it even more complicated, it is clear that a town could restrict or zone registered caregiver retail stores to particular locations.
Yeah, right, we've already addressed that.
Yeah, so they know out there the full content of the sentence, the audience.
So what's the consensus, what do you want to do?
Let's move forward with this application.
Let's go. Does everybody have a chance to look at the application?
No. Jeremy and his little family are going to be out of there relatively soon.
Yep, he told me October 31st, but he don't plan to open for months, so he's got time.
Okay.
He doesn't have to put his caregiver boxes up in the air, but...
Are you planning anything specific? Specific, that's different than what the building is gonna look like now?
Um, no, right now, we're gonna use the current envelope, so.
Yeah, yeah. Security, cameras?
Yes.
There, there are a number of restrictions that he does have to follow.
Yeah.
Yes.
All of his abutters were...
Noted, yes.
And did you get any feedback?
Not for this particular, for Tyler's, it was one letter that came in, or one call that came in, was concerned that the caregiver store was gonna be going up to Jeff Coolidge's, and I said, no, that's not where it's going.
Kind of love that reveal.
Well, is that big garage behind your bike, Ted?
Well, we won't even go there.
All right, their switch and bench class is gonna be going...
That's right, that's for me.
That's upstairs.
I would entertain a motion about the application. Speed review. Let's present it, Dave.
We're not gonna go through it.
Oh, we're gonna go through it one by one.
Yeah, let's do that.
Let's do that.
You, I'm gonna use the sheet on this, and I'm not gonna use the application, so. Applicants', location, name and address and phone number are present on the application. Yes. Applicants' property, name and address and phone number are on it, yes. Proof of legal interest, yes. Any interest, any legal interest in abutting property? Attachments for abutment lists?
That's been all, done the mailings.
It's all taken care of.
Description of the project proposed is in there. Uh, this land survey, this existing one, but that was done real fairly recently, ten, twelve years ago.
Yep.
Yeah.
Amount of acreage to be developed, it's not gonna be anything older than what's already currently there.
Right.
It's actually large, but this time. Current use of property is commercial market. Is the property in a flood zone, wetland, shrimp?
No, I had a elevation survey done from Sawyer's Bridge all the way back before we built the house to make sure we were high enough.
Property is in, in a map, sand, aquifer? That's, no. Estimated cost is really not applicable, is it? You're gonna be doing some remodeling, done maybe?
No, pretty much just some storage cabinets and things like that, this time.
Surveillance videos?
Yep.
So you're gonna go back to growing on the third floor like you were before?
Yep.
Gross floor area to be developed. Percentage of structures impacted, it's not... Water and sewer listed, yes, that was. Fought plants, utilities, eastern, right, is there no eastern, something out there?
No.
Number of parking spaces is thirty, I guess it's...
We've had over thirty cars, I could put twenty-five down here, so.
And there's no reason for an erosion control plan that's listed. And there's no reason for an erosion control plan that's listed. Any waivers that are requested?
You are going to have this sprinkled, right, Bob?
I don't know if that's a requirement.
Give us a question again.
To have the facility sprinkled.
It's not going to be a dwelling unit?
No.
No. Everything will just pop and smoke?
Does the project require any state permits? And that is, yes.
Yeah, licensing, yep. That's a copy of my licensing, yeah.
Any questions from the... I'll entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to accept.
Well, first, we're going to accept the application.
As complete.
As complete.
Make a motion that we accept the application as complete.
Five seconds left. All in favor? Motion carried, unanimous. There's no waiver that's or...
Can we require him to have a camera?
Uh, surveillance.
It's already in the ordinance.
Yeah, it's in the ordinance.
It's in the ordinance.
There's quite a...
So we, so we don't have to require it in our...
No, he'll have to comply with all the local ordinances that's set in place. And there's quite a list.
And there's state laws.
And state, that's correct.
You guys using CO2 canisters?
No.
No? You don't use that anymore?
Uh, not in retail. That's, it'll be only in cultivation. I do in my cultivation, but that's not what I'm...
I have a burner. Yes, we do. Use CO2, yeah.
And that's...
But we don't, not with canisters.
What?
Are you concerned about alarms?
I am.
I have them right on my phone, so, all of my rooms are wired, but I know if there's a problem here and I can, I know if there's a problem in the rooms. You can, like outside, every room is a monitor.
That tells you what the O2 level is?
Yep. And put your humidity and CO2 levels.
And they have to be, I checked monthly?
Well, several times a day. I don't think that sucks.
I'm talking for proper fun trips. Is there a special...
Several times a day. I don't trust any...
I would think with the amount of investment, he'd be right on top of it.
That's true. That is true.
Like guys in gold.
Any other discussion?
Um, signage. I saw nothing in regards to signage. The old ordinance said they couldn't have signs. Are they allowed to have signs with the news?
Someone actually does say, say something about signage.
Yeah, it says, just has to be in accordance with local.
Correct. I did read that part.
Okay. Because I looked and I, I know stupid lines.
I make a motion that we accept this permit, that we approve this permit as complete.
Do we want a state M and K caregivers on that?
I make a motion that we accept this permit from MMJ Caregiver for the MMJ Caregiver Store as written.
I'll second that.
Seconded. Discussion? General discussion.
This would fall under Section 10 Marijuana Retail Facility, that's what I mean.
Did you get that?
He seconded. Hold on, if you were.
Seconded.
It's on the article 10. All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
A long wait, Bob.
Yes.
Thank you for not moving that time.
Thank you for coming to town.
Yeah, a lot of investment.
We'll have to come later. Not during this.
In a new ordinance, it's specific.
They will adjust the fees.
I don't think the fees are going to bother them a whole lot. Maybe they are.
Don't be greedy, Bob.
A year from now, we can talk about this.
We can modify this. It's time for you to retire, anyways.
Most of the words don't want to have PD set right in the driveway up there anymore.
Well, I think the discussion for the high fees was because of the added security that would be needed for the town.
A number of reasons, a number of reasons.
We've had more trouble with tenants and wave ahead with the marijuana business.
And hopefully it stays that way.
Yeah.
Well, next item of business is Tyler Fair, Hyrolla Cannabis Company.
I gotta ask, why that name?
Boy, you got the casino right up the road.
That's what I assumed, but I didn't want to assume.
I can see a set of dice out on the sign flashing.
Now, the other one in this building, the cherry road, is that up there today?
No, no, it's a field, empty field. I don't know if they're building anything.
Well, one of the questions that I had was, is he going to have a doctor next door that's going to be in and out the certificates?
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of retail medical storefronts have a nurse practitioner on staff.
That's what, yeah.
Or one that travels around that will give out...
Will you be doing that?
Yeah, I'd love to. I'd love to definitely contract, you know? More, more people that can help with my medicine, you know, that both is fulfilling monetarily and, you know, mentally. The reason I got in this business is really because my grandmother got very sick with stage four cancer, and she was given a very short amount, well, time to live. And that's what kind of coerced us to try out cannabis. And she was given six months, and we were able to prolong her life and her quality of life for six years, getting off opioid painkillers. And it was only until we moved her to hospice, when she broke her hip, that hospice didn't allow us to administer cannabis anymore because they're state funded, and they receive state money. And that's when we lost her, essentially, because she went back on the, back on the vicodin and we lost our grandmother then. So...
I've heard that story several times.
It's terrible. It's absolutely, it breaks my heart to see them talk about it now.
I was looking at the photos of where you're going to locate this building. One of the photos is behind the cattle fences, it's right there.
Yes.
Is that where your location is going to be in that?
Yeah, essentially, yeah, if you were, there's two entrances to that property on Pigeon Hill Road.
Yeah.
There's a northern and southern entrance.
Yeah.
So if you're standing at that northern entrance, it would be almost directly, how do you, slightly right?
Right in the middle of the snowmobile trail.
Slightly right, so we're going to let the snowmobile trail...
I was going to say, you're putting in the middle of the snowmobile trail, that's a...
I'm a snowmobile...
I was going to recuse myself from that part of the conversation.
I'll pile the trail if they want. No, I'm a snowmobile myself, so.
This is, so this is... I see Rick's back there grinning about this, no.
Not going to be the lane road. Where lane road comes up.
Yes, that field directly across from where lane road tees to Route 26.
Now, have you, you're going to hate me for this, but I have to ask, it's a state highway. Have you talked to the state about...
Curve cuts, permits.
Yeah.
Yeah, Rick had just told me this morning, Rick, the property owner, he said that they had already done that previously, and that's why there's two existing entrances.
Okay, so you've got the count.
Nothing recently. By the way, I'm Rick Fair, I'm the property owner, along with my wife Karen, and we haven't talked about this particular purpose, but there are two existing curve cuts there, and there's the southerly one running the edge of the property, close to Jeff's place, and then, and then the northerly one. And they're both, they're both used currently for farming business and that sort of thing. And, and the snowmobiles who cross there during the winter from the north.
My concern is, does the state require him to do a ticker, to do traffic type thing to guarantee an opening? Do you know?
They've given him a driveway entrance permit.
And he's allowed to transfer that?
Well, he's going to own the property.
He'll still maintain ownership of the property.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay. So this is an at least to own kind of a thing?
It's a lease.
Just a lease.
That's what...
And you realize that if you give up that lease, then this all goes away.
And what is the length of the lease?
Initial, initial term is per progress, I believe, with a couple of options to renew.
Right. That's in your package.
Yes. Twenty by forty. So it's actually being very small, because it's only going to serve one purpose. It's just going to be essentially a safe place where I can have patients come in and where we can do our transactions, you know, in a legal and safe environment. And that's all the building will serve for. It's just maybe like, I, I like an office, you know? I've never had an office before, but, well, you know, I'm just in a grow room all the time, you know?
Can I, can I address this?
Yes.
I'm an Oxford resident, although I'm a mechanic falls property tax payer, you know? Jeff, on that question, we live next door, as you know, and we're in a butter to the, to the place. And so the, the way this is done is really important for me personally, and I, and what Tyler is, what he's come up with is that actually really fits nicely with the, what you've established up there on the hill, too. You know, kind of a modern rustic look, you know? And so I can see that this building complimenting yours and...
I was more interested in the big flash and dice, because I wanted to get a bigger set.
Right, but I think, hoping that, you know, as, as that develops further, that we can continue that kind of motif.
You and I talked about that, and I do appreciate that. Thank you.
It's only twenty by forty. It's nice, I like that.
And will the, the parking area, will it just be where you go in and you clear it?
Yep, essentially, yeah, it's going to be just a gravel parking lot, very similar to Sugar Shack, you know?
Okay.
Just like a little bit of gravel lay out front, maybe enough room for twenty cars total.
So you're not going to ruin that good cornfield?
Only, only with a little store, you know, but...
No tar?
Maybe we'll give hay racks in the fall, you know?
When you come up the lane road, and you come up on 26 with that building, it'll be situated.
You're almost looking, so when you come up lane road, you almost look at the southernmost entrance, it's, it'd be all the way to the northern end towards...
It's towards the Oxford Town Line.
All the way to the other end. All the way to the other end. Yeah.
Now, my, my one concern...
Where the snowmobile trail goes through.
My one concern, Mr. Fair, is that on your outline, that you put that it's just not for medical, but for recreational retail as well.
Uh, yeah, well, it, it'll only be medical up until permitting happens. And I'm, I'm open to, you know, changing that if need be. We can permit it as medical now, but as the retail license, if we're going after Section 10 of the new ordinance, you know, it would, it would essentially allow us to come in front of the planeboard once, and then really our, our date of date won't change at all, you know, uh, once we're operating. Because we'll operate as medical and continue to operate medical for foreseeable future, but also allow recreational patients to come in as of, they're saying, hopefully maybe March or spring of next year. They keep saying dates.
Well, I, well, if I might add something, I, I think we discussed that. More likely, you will have to go be back before the board to get approved for the recreational program.
I'm fine with that.
Because we don't, the town doesn't even know exactly what's going to happen.
Exactly.
So...
And if I may also, the lease that we've agreed to is, is only for medical.
So it'd be medical.
I, I'm concerned as well as the property owner that when, when we make this big change in the state law, that, that, you know, it's going to affect everybody, so we, you know, we're going to revisit everything.
On that point, I'd just like to say that I made a note of that in my application as well, so you know that I'm making that way. The reason is, if you look at the history of the other states that have recreational programs and medical programs, that quite often the recreational use basically eclipses the medical, because people don't have to go get cards if they could buy it anywhere.
Correct.
So that's why I think it's a long-term piece of the business plan for anybody that opens a store, they better be able to transition to, to the adult use at some point, or just be out of business.
Yep.
So, medical...
Yep.
Will there be septic and all of that going in?
It's all in here. And you said twenty spaces for parking, gravel?
Yes.
Well, I was asking because I didn't know if the Oxford Sewer, I had been told Oxford ran sewage to the casino, and I didn't know if it'd come that far down.
Wish. I don't have any... A wish. So does Jeff.
They originally told us that they were going to run it all the way to the town line, and then when they built it, they didn't.
They didn't, okay.
They did not, no, they just ran it to the casino.
That's why I was asking, because I had heard, you know, that they were supposed to do that as well.
It's okay, maybe.
I guess I should run this through the chair. What are we going to do for electrical power up there? You're going to need three-phase power.
No, it's just a small store. There's no cultivation going on, no grow lights, it's just essentially a smaller pharmacy.
That was my only other concern, I was looking at the three-phase.
Guess you'll have to put in a burner.
I built one, one once before.
Yeah, I was surprised with Hanifords. Hanifords did three-phase down Route 11, but they didn't run any on 26. And I thought that they were, but I, I was surprised that they did. But then I, that's what I was told.
Not to interrupt, but the only other concern is traffic. He's in for a rude awakening. You can go up there in any given afternoon and watch them racing three white at a hundred miles an hour. And it's very surprising, somebody has them and killed them.
But, one of the reasons why I was asking about if the state was going to require him to do anything...
That would be up to the state in trying to take care, take care of that.
Yeah, that's going to be a state issue. It's not something that we...
Can we push to a traffic survey or something so we can figure they need to slow down? Or a turn in lane? I mean, they brought the turn in lane down.
Well, I know that they, they did an assessment recently when they changed the light down by the casino. So they've got a pretty good idea of what's going on for traffic now, whether they have to justify another light in front of your place or somewhere else, I don't know.
How do you, I like to call it twist somebody up, get them looking and thinking and seeing that, hey, maybe there's a possibility, you know? Do we wait till somebody gets killed or do we...
I was going to say, I think...
You're just posting on Facebook.
I do have to take a video of one now. It's, it's crazy, and somebody's going to get hurt.
Well, the reason the lights activated in Oxford now is because of the death that occurred two years ago.
Yeah. But, I mean, and now it's almost like a drag strip. They come down through there and the rumble strips in the road, you know, when they're coming, you know, when they're passing.
But the speed up right in front of it.
I can do that.
Now, will you be doing your growing there or beneath it?
Sorry, Bob.
Well, I just, the cop, being there is by the cop, I mean, questioned two or three times, and sometimes...
Just a store, just a storefront, medical marijuana.
Just a storefront, okay.
Security cameras and all that.
Security cameras, police seal tracking.
Well, that's the other...
I believe that's actually in the ordinance here, required.
And we want to move forward and approve the second one, the door that says one. If we do do that, I strongly suggest that we have a moratorium for six months after these approvals, so that we can get all of our ordinances correct. So, if you guys want to move forward, it's not my call. I'll entertain a motion for the application.
So you just need a motion to accept the application as...
As complete.
I make a motion that we accept the application as complete, as it is. Which just means we discuss it.
Yeah, we're just discussing, go through it one by one.
Just to keep it going.
Bob, you seconded it? All in favor? And... All right. Applicant's, uh, location, name, and address, and phone number on the application.
That's correct.
Applicant's property name and address and phone.
Is it Rick Bennett or Richard?
Richard. Richard and Karen, K-A-R.
Yep. Thank you.
Proof of legal interest, deed of lease, there is a lease in it, it's attached. Any legal interest to a budding properties.
Not from the lease, not from the leasing.
Yeah.
VC, you said?
Description of the project proposed.
Attachment for a butters list is here too.
Oh, yeah. Description for project proposed, it is in here, twenty-four, twenty by forty building. I wrote that one, attachment for a butters list, that was in here. Uh, land survey, uh, don't think we need that, it's far enough away from the... Amount of acreage should be covered, that's covered in here, it's what, one and a half, I believe, with just a small building.
Are you relocating five hundred feet from the property line, right?
Yes, more than.
Yep.
Current use of the property is farmland. Is the property in a flood zone, wetland, stream, or river, I hope not. Is property in your map for a sand aquifer?
No.
It's not part of the aquifer for trifling.
No.
So any of those I could help? Estimated cost is in here. Uh, gross floor area to be covered is in here, and that's, uh, four thousand?
Uh, yeah, I was a little confused on the gross, and then my gross floor area...
Four eight hundred square feet.
Yeah, right.
Percentages of structures and parking are listed. Water and sewer supply to be created. Which would be a well in the septic system. There's no, uh, utility easements or right-of-way on that property?
No.
Does the snowmobile club have a easement across that property?
No, just permission from Red.
Just permission. Okay, nothing in writing, well, okay.
How do you think, good neighbor? Number of parking spaces is listed.
Oh, I should look to make it twenty.
Twenty.
Or maybe ten.
I do, good turnaround. Erosion control plan, I don't, is, you don't think this...
I will say, this, this, uh, application, I told him at this point in time, because he wasn't sure if he was gonna get permitted for this, so he didn't wanna spend a lot of money on a septic design, erosion control, a survey, et cetera, et cetera, until he got the approval. So I just told him at this point, there was no need, you know, why spend it? But a contractor will be responsible when they do the, uh, excavation for basically a flat field, so I don't think that's really gonna be an issue, he's not on the side of a hill, not near a wetland, or a river, or a stream, so I don't think that's gonna be a necessary, uh, requirement, but that's something that, uh, you can look at, or waive it, whatever you wanna do with that.
Um, that, that'd be all contingent upon his occupancy in that building, just to make sure that he gets all of that.
Right, right. Yep.
Any waivers requested, there's none? I mean, it doesn't require a state permit, so she doesn't have to stick around.
They're attached.
They're all attached. Any discussion? Any discussion from the floor?
If you're anything else, if I may, I'd just like to add something. Um, I just, I'm meeting with PJ, um, and I just want, as you heard tonight, he's a very passionate guy, and one of the things I like about him, and the reason I'm comfortable, and my wife is comfortable with him doing this, is because he cares a lot about quality, he cares passionately about building things the right way, and, and I work with neighbors there, and, um, he's, he's right on top of his game. As you've heard, he reads everything, he follows the rules, he's, um, he wants to have a very professional, high-quality operation, and so I just wanted to say that as my, one of the reasons that we're comfortable, my wife and I, we're doing this and doing the business, and actually with PJ, because I'm a good early impressed with that, and his passion for actually caring for his clientele, which is, uh, which is really important, I think, in today's world.
Thank you, Rick. Also, I, I don't know if anybody was here back at the, uh, July town council meetings, I also tried to meet myself available to the town council, I got up and just told them my name, and honestly, I became called president, I've been here for forty years, I really wanna bring my business home, uh, whereas I could, you know, look through that town, but I really wanted, you know, to help serve the town that I'm living in, and, uh, I'm, I'm happy to be an asset to you, and whoever works on the ordinances going forward, to help us all, you know, have a better understanding, what I mean, I'd love to give you guys tours through my facility, or just help learn, anybody that's ever said in learning about it. I'm trying, a rising tide raises all ships, and I'm trying to be a good neighbor.
Fred, I have a quick question, now, our approval of these, the first application, is that contingent upon the council approving?
I, I believe, no, I believe that is gonna be up to the planning board to make this final decision on that. And that was what they adopted for, uh, guidelines.
And that's why I asked my question, the one about getting you off the hook, and then raising the limit, would be the other thing, in order to allow both of them would be needed, from the one to two, or whatever. Do we do that before we approve this, do we do it after we approve it?
Or do we do that, one, if we approve this, it's within the motion, as, as I suggested, Roger, I think it would be in our greatest, uh, looking forward to have a moratorium for six months, to get all of these in order, before we actually get inundated with more, if that's possible.
Yeah, well, I wanted...
So if you approved it contingent on some changes, proposed changes, that, uh, may come up in the next six months, you could do it, approval on contingent of that, but that's your choice, too. If you feel like you have to come up with these changes prior to the approval, then it's up to you.
Well, it's strictly medical, at this point, it's strictly medical.
Correct.
And the following state guidelines, so it...
Correct.
I don't have, I don't have any issue with that, the issue is with how many do we want here? Is our wording good enough, can we just have two, that'd be good, and, you know...
You may, you may decide as a board, you might wanna allow five, you may decide, stick with two.
And we really need to discuss that, we need to do that, too.
I think, you know, I, I think after we, this is complete, we're gonna discuss a couple of other things, and, uh, and we could certainly discuss a, a workshop coming up, and so we can review all this.
I'll entertain a motion.
What are you gonna say?
Will we make the motion on...
Yeah.
The whole thing, to accept his application and to allow Mr. Fair to have a storefront?
Have a second one.
And that'll be a second one, and we, in that, we'll have to... We'll have to waive the restriction over one, and allow another at two. And Mr. Fair's strictly medical.
Yes.
It's a sale of recreational, hasn't it? It's gone through the...
It has not.
Could we make this contingent upon, um, the approval of the council, adjusting that to two instead of one? Basically putting this back into their hands, um, I mean, we can approve this contingent upon, uh...
Any proposed changes?
Yes.
I think I, I think I like that a lot.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too.
I would agree with that, that sounds, uh, sounds perfect, um, I don't...
The only thing that does, with that aspect, though, it delays his ability to hop on it for another month.
I'd have taken a month.
Also, it'll have to...
It'll only be two weeks, right?
Yeah, I mean, I...
Can it get on the agenda at this point?
I don't think he's created the agenda.
Well, we're, we're just gonna do a workshop.
No, 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 asking the council to change it from one to two.
What, what they did, sorry to interrupt you, but what they did in Auburn is they allowed everybody to operate, and then they essentially just had to agree to, you know, abide by the new rules, you know, is what it...
Any proposed changes?
Yep.
Yeah, but if you're already operating, and they don't approve two...
That you're gonna be out of the business.
Yeah, that's, that's why we grandfathered the ones in, in Auburn, yeah, the people are too close from the setbacks, they were grandfathered in, allowed to keep their location, but just to operate under the new rules, a new permit.
But you know, if you send it back to the council to change it to two, you also open the door for the council to, to change it to seven. They don't have to say, oh, we're just gonna make it two, they can make it whatever they want.
Exactly.
From what I understand, the way Zach explained it to me, he had got basically, the town council's put it in you guys' lap to make the decision on any changes that you wanted to make, and he almost left it open-ended for you to make that final decision. If you wanna put it back in the town council's hands, that's up to you.
We have it on tape. Are we following the town charter to do it that way?
I, I can't answer that, I don't know the answer to that.
Then the town council did the thing, it was a dispensary thing, wasn't it, though, isn't that different to what these guys are talking about?
Yeah, that's totally different, that's totally, there's probably won't be any dispensary here in the town mechanic falls ever.
So is that what that, I, was that read wrong, isn't that what they said, no more than one of those?
One, no more than one dispensary, and we, we probably won't ever get one here, I wouldn't be very surprised, but... Because there's so many big cities that are applying for that, am I right?
Absolutely, and there's only eight dispensary licenses.
Yeah, and they're gonna allow twelve, maybe, total?
Yeah.
We can basically do what a dispensary can do now, is they took the restrictions on the plant council off.
And, and the, and the thing is too, Fog, is that wording that was done back then, that's what the state told us, now they've come along with this new wave and changed definitions of what words mean again, so...
We actually created the rules, regulations that are in the book, when medical marijuana became legal. That's when those rules were created, and we hadn't updated them since. Uh, we just looked and tried to anticipate the future, and we have some difficulty doing that, apparently. We didn't see far enough in advance.
I'm hoping that the state will come up with more, a, a definition of each one of these, whether it be a testing facility, or cultivation, or caregiver, I'm pretty, it's pretty vague on, on how they define it each one. I can't, I'm not sure I can even tell the difference between one from another. These guys may be able to tell, because they're dealing with it, but me is...
I say we go to whole, whole boot, so...
We hear that.
Then we put a moratorium on it.
I couldn't have been to accept this one, and then go back to the council.
Make a motion to amend that ordinance to two instead of one, and at the same time, put a moratorium, and then go ahead and work on his permit afterwards.
Yes. Exactly, I was just thinking the same.
So we're gonna... Amend the ordinance.
Yep.
Take care of this, and then...
Amend the...
Amend the ordinance.
Ordinance and do a moratorium, and then go ahead and take care of his permit.
No, um, no, gonna have to do it three steps.
Correct.
And then...
Whatever you wanna do.
Well, I'm just thinking of the, the procedure, if we put a moratorium, it starts now.
Correct.
Well, that, that's something you're gonna have to draft up and, and spell it out pretty clear when you do a moratorium, and that's gonna have an effective date for six months, or whatever time of it you want.
It'd be pretty simple.
Not much, you know, six months, and then you can extend that if you wanted to, but...
And we can just agree tonight to create a moratorium.
Correct.
We don't have to write it, draft it, or enact it, we could just say, that's what we're gonna do.
I'm with you on that.
So we don't have to really know that.
So I'd like to make a motion to amend the current ordinance, so it reads that two facilities are allowed, instead of just one.
Retail caregiver facilities.
Yes, retail caregiver facilities.
Second. Any further discussion? Any discussion from the floor? All in favor? Three, four, opposed? Three, two. Motion carries. Hey, ask why you guys are opposed?
I think it should go to the town council.
Let's try it out.
Yeah, yeah, that's fair.
I agree.
I'm not that one of that. I just think it's, it's coming anyway, and you guys that run them, they get business, I don't have a problem with them.
The town council put it to seven, that's more on the back, I just think, I just think it should be in their decision.
The council and the publics.
Well, the publics has already, as we discussed, voted.
We had voted.
Well, by opting in, yeah.
Voted to do that, and we have written the words, so the public doesn't have to vote anymore.
The public granted you permission to make the rules.
And they granted us, and the wording of the, of how that was worded, and then the vote, they granted the planning board to write the ordinances for this.
I mean, it kinda sounds like the town council, like you said, Fred, throwing it into our lap, more or less.
That's right.
They started out with one, but doesn't, you know, I mean... Everybody's bouncing this around, um, he's right next to the town line, uh, if somebody was to do it and put it on the other side of the town line, it's in the same neighborhood, and we're losing the tax dollars, all right? He's showing you a build, a building, that I believe is a post-in-beam building, and he and I are gonna have sit and talk, because I like the idea of that. It's a quaint little building sitting up there next to the town line, it's not down here bothering anybody in town. The only one that would be bothering is me, and he's fine enough, wait for me, we can holler at each other, not each other, you know, so we're up there by ourselves, tax dollars, benefits, okay? We're doing, and, and I'm not trying to say this to be arrogant or belligerent, we're doing the town a favor, we get no three-phase power, we get no water, no sewer, no city gas, we're up there, we're on our own, trying to make a living, okay? And I understand that the rule said one, Lou wants to give it for two, the town council could give it seven, but right now, we're looking at two, all right? His business and his money that he wants to make between now and March, February or March, it depends on the next, let's say, sixty days.
His business and his money that he wants to make between now and March, February or March, it depends on the next, let's say sixty days. And if he can't get it done, he's not really screwed, but it, everything goes up when it's going, you know?
I think we're just as well gone down and see if all of them said, I want for your fine stand.
Yeah, I mean, but it, it's, we're up on top of the hill and like I said, I don't wanna be subjecting to shins, but we're up there and our closest neighbor is the town dump.
Our transfer station.
Excuse me, our transfer station.
When the casino moved up.
Twenty-six that says mechanic falls not business currently.
I didn't say that.
When the casino moved up there, this whole planning board and former planning board members were so excited. And we, the first thing was change the zoning on twenty-six so that all these businesses could come in and no one has, or Hanford.
Well, he's going on the other end. I gotta start selling more whoopee pies so when people get the munchies, they start getting whoopee pies. You know, it, we gotta work together, you know, and I think that's an awful nice building.
I am a resident of the town, you know, and I wanna keep it in my town.
You got any whoopee pies with you right now?
She ordered thirty dozen. That was gone up. That's ordered. You can't make enough, you can't make enough.
I'm just kidding.
So, we need a motion to pass this. Has the ordinances amended to let this go through? If that's what you want, that's the next step that we have to go through. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the application of Tyler Thayer for Hyrule Canada's company to be located.
No address at the yet.
There's no number to that, is there?
I got, we got a map, we got a map and law, as close as we can cover it now.
At map six, law two. Mechanic falls may.
Any further discussion? Any discussion?
The only thing I'd say is, we're on one end of the spectrum on the rainbow. Tyler's gonna be the other spectrum, the other end. In the future, what can we fill in between these two?
You got the children of the corn there.
Excuse me?
You got the children of the corn. What more can you ask for?
Jeff, Jeff, what do you, Jeff, what do you gotta understand? I'm not fundamentally against.
No, I'm not pointing fingers.
But the town just went through a real big generation of this summer over not following the town charter.
No, I understand.
And that's my only concern, is that we do it correctly.
Right, no, I.
It's costing two weeks, costing two weeks, you know. But the town charter needs to be followed.
No, you're right.
I really don't know what the town charter says, to be honest. But somehow, we've never been able to approve when it says like this in the past. It seems strange to me.
No, I mean, you, you have a right, have your opinion and, and vote which, vote your conscience.
But, Fred, does the council not approve these ordinances and say that as we create these ordinances, that we were just in doing that?
That's the way I understood it when Zach presented that to me, that the town council's approved these ordinances and the planning board can adjust it the way they see fit. If they wanna increase it to two, two dispensaries, two retail stores, two testing facilities, whatever you wanna do.
Is, is that? But does that mean they don't have to approve it afterwards?
That's the way I understand it. But Zach's not here, he's on vacation.
We made the first set of ordinances around the dispensaries and all that stuff without the planning, but without the town council approving it.
Well, we made the recommendations and it went to the council, the council first did.
And they've turned around and given you the authority to make the decisions back, and you're putting it back in your, your lap, so to speak.
Was that to change the ordinance?
To make changes.
Or to approve businesses?
I follow this kind of closely and I understood that you guys now have the right specifically to assign the number of stores, testing facilities, all of that stuff.
It's the way I understand it as well.
And since we had this conversation at prior meeting as well.
Well, we were talking about how to make the ordinances because.
Just don't have.
Gain that information.
We don't have the town manager here to.
I think the town.
Specifically state that, or we don't have the council rep that should be here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure where that town council liaison is, but.
She refused to come because she's not approved.
Okay. I think, I believe the town council wanted you as a planning board to make these decisions because you're always familiar with all these applicants and what they're proposing. The town council doesn't really understand or have not been privy to all the information. And the planning board has, and that's why they're asking you to make these decisions.
Does that help, Walter?
I just wish that the representative was here so you could hear from Lois's mouth. I mean, I trust Fred's telling the best that he understands it, but.
But my side of it too, while I agree with Walter on that, I don't, my opinion is that Mr. Thayer shouldn't be punished too. So I think we should do the two. And put a moratorium on it and go from there.
We have a motion to second.
Let's vote. All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Welcome to the.
Good luck.
Welcome to the committee.
Oh, aren't here.
Again? Again?
So you, are you gonna do that moratorium thing or we don't do that?
I'll just attend, I'll just attend a motion right now that we draft the ordinances for a moratorium.
I second that motion.
I can't, I can't make the motion.
I make the motion and we couldn't replace the wording for a moratorium on medical or retail. Whatever we need to, marijuana, all marijuana type businesses for the next six months.
Six months.
Do you want to have a workshop to do this, or do you just wanna, I mean, we gotta sit down and discuss that.
No, we, we have to discuss all of this.
Exactly.
Right, let's, let's pass that, the, the motion for a moratorium.
To create a moratorium.
Moratorium. Then we're gonna have a workshop. I wanted to have a workshop in two weeks anyway, to discuss these specific things.
So, I'll second Paula's motion. Yes!
You did second it?
Motion has been made and seconded for a moratorium on all marijuana, use facilities in town mechanic halls.
For a minimum of six months.
For six months.
I say twelve. I say twelve. They, they only allow six.
You only allow six.
It can be extended.
We can extend it.
Try to get him a little more time.
We can extend it later, need be, but.
Any discussion by the board? Any discussion by the public?
Yeah, you've got a lot of small people out there that are, that have licensed kitchens and are doing some things in their homes right now. I think they haven't stepped up to get licenses, so. I, I know that's a catch twenty-two, but I don't know how you deal with grandfathering that. If they're following all the other rules, you know, should they have at some point an opportunity?
If they have a commercial kitchen, and they're running a commercial kitchen and doing food grade stuff, I'm sure that they need to have a state license.
Yep.
For that. They have to have a state inspection for that kitchen.
I believe that if they sell it through their kitchen, do they take it to the local Yacht Sales?
Well, this is where those people are gonna get in trouble, but the ones that have been following these, have been abiding for a year or two.
We've had stuff come in that supposedly has license, licenses, and it didn't last on the shelf very long. And they're no longer around for some reason, so.
Alright, all in favor? Unanimous?
Six point five and six point six.
I guess I'll come back.
Six point five, six point six.
And that's.
Lock boxes.
This is.
I think there's, you don't have anything here in writing.
No, it's just a discussion.
Just a discussion. There's nothing in writing.
And that, what this is, the fire department has proposed a, all new businesses have a Knox box so that they don't, fire department, if there's some kind of smoke or something, they don't have to bust down the door. And they can just put up Knox box. Fire department has a special security key so that they can open the lock, Knox box, they can have the key to the building and go in and, and make sure that there's no fire or any smoke that's creating an issue. And they're gonna supply the Knox box? The business would have to supply the Knox box. What's the price of that? They're, they're anywhere from two to three hundred dollars somewhere that, and you have to come, get an application with the fire department. Now, this, this proposal is something that does have to be an ordinance and it has to be spelled out pretty clearly. All we're doing is discussing this right now.
I would think that it would have to be up to the business owner as to whether or not they wanted it and wanted to spend the money for it.
Well, that, it's an option now.
Right.
But we're gonna try to enact an ordinance stating that any new business.
Any new business.
Any new businesses that come into town, put these Knox boxes on the, on the outside of the building itself.
It's not a state ordinance.
It's non-state ordinance. I've asked several businesses to, to put these Knox boxes on. Hanford, we, we did, I think if you recall, that was one of the contingents of them being approved, is getting a Knox box there. It's, it's helpful to any business, whether it be the Sugar Shack, or Napa Store, or Future Foods, or any of them, to have these Knox boxes. It's, it may, may be helpful. Because it costs a thousand dollars to replace a door, and if that happens more than once, then you've got, you know, businesses don't wanna have to keep doing that, and they're gonna blame it on the fire department.
Thank you for your time.
So that's why, so that's why the fire department would like to have this, an official ordinance. Okay, that's number one. Number two is they would like, the fire department would like to have a disconnect on all new homes being built for this, kind of the same purpose, so that if the fire department shows up to a, to a new house and it's all energized, but they've got smoke or flames coming out the window, they can go and shut an outside disconnect off so that then they can put water on them. Otherwise, they have to wait for CMP to show up to make that disconnect, that power disconnect.
And that disconnect isn't that expensive.
They're a few hundred dollars.
Yeah.
But would that, did something the fire department had a key do, or anybody?
No, no, anybody, anybody. In fact, if you wanted to work on your home, you say you built a new home and you could go outside of, either it's on the outside of the building, or a telephone pole, or whatever, you can disconnect that, shut it right off. All the power's gone in your house, you can go in and wire up your septic and not feel like you've got a problem.
And the other advantage with having one of these is most of them have provisions for additional breakers. So if you wanna feed a barn, or a separate garage, or whatever, from that same location outside of the house, you can, you can do a sub-fee to another building.
That's the advantage of a disconnect. Now, and I will say that I've, I've spoken with the, the state electrical inspector. It, right now, it's not, it's not a state law, but it's coming.
Yeah.
Absolutely, after that fire, after that explosion in Farmington.
Well, that's, that's part of the reason, yes.
One of my dogs turned the knob on our propane stove and my house filled up propane. And when I opened the door when I got home that afternoon, the propane just hit me and my two dogs were at the dead, door and they were almost dead.
Wow.
So having that outside would have really helped.
Yep, because otherwise you gotta go in and shut your power all off.
Oh, I went in and opened everything up.
Yeah, you're lucky, you're lucky that the, what happens, a lot of people, they, they open up their house and, and then the air comes in and hits that thermostat and that sparks it off.
Luckily, nothing.
Right, you were lucky. You should have almost.
I was. I realized that.
Right.
After the.
After the fact, right.
And these are ordinances we're looking at.
Right, we, we just wanna enact these. So, kinda like we're gonna do a moratorium, we'll write that up as a draft, and a draft for the Knox box, and a draft for a disconnect. I think, I think the town will benefit.
Does the fire chief or whoever the, the fire person is that is asking for this?
John Damon, yes.
Does John have any particulars that he wants, like where they're located, how they're located, any particular companies they would work with that they wanna see?
Well, as far as the Knox box?
Yeah.
Well, no, the fire department, the fire department determines that. They, you have to, you have to go to the fire department for the Knox box. They have a sheet and it's, it's very high security. It's not just anybody can get these keys.
Yeah.
So.
Well, that's why I was asking.
They, they, they do have, the fire department gives you a, there's a flyer, a brochure that gives you anywhere from a two hundred and twenty dollar Knox box up to a five hundred dollar Knox box, maybe even more, I, I don't know, but there's quite a variation.
This is a little box, a little set of keys in so you can open.
Right.
They have a master key that opens this.
Yeah.
Correct.
And they can get into the building.
Well, I was, didn't know if he wanted us to include all of that in the ordinance, or we just making a cut and dry, you need a Knox box.
Knox box in general, and they're, they're, they're fire safety approved, so it's.
Hasn't other towns already approved this? You go to these commercial stores.
Other towns.
Like Lewis and Robin with Lowe's and all that. They all got them, you know.
Especially apartments, apartment buildings that have locked entrance.
Yeah.
They have Knox doors.
That's a thousand dollars for a door.
Right.
Okay, or maybe more, or three hundred dollars for bulbs. And the other good thing, you lock yourself.
One time, there was a fire, the alarm was going off, there was no smoke going up, and after a while.
Yep, exactly.
Knocked a window in and.
They have to buy, buy.
It almost happened at my house. I had my smoke alarm going off in one July, the dust or something was in it.
Yep.
Fire department was there, we were gonna have to go in, luckily Dick Small was the next door to shut the light. He said, his brother was right over there, just called him with him, they got hold my button, I came with key and unlocked the door.
I, I think it's a good thing to have.
More than all the damage getting in, which they gotta do.
It helps them in America.
It is a small fee. What that's gonna do is just gonna put it in our book of ordinances, so that when the CEO approves a building application and build, you book building permit, that's gonna be part of the, the criteria for the occupancy permit. They have to have that Knox box there, or a disconnect. In a, in a, in a business case, it would be a Knox box, but.
Fred, could you, when we have the discussion about that, could you do some research?
Yeah.
Give us one general law star.
Oh, sure.
And, and, I was gonna say, do they have to do both?
Well, a business would be different than a, a house, a new, a new home.
Like the gentleman that got the apartment.
Yep, he should have a Knox box. He should have a Knox box. And he.
And he probably would.
He probably, well, yeah, he should, he should, and any, any new business.
The other one, I, I liked the idea, but like him, he's going away for the weekend somewhere, say the store's closed down, whatever, this kid comes up to mess around, shuts his power off.
You can put a padlock on it.
Well, that's, that's right.
By the way, if somebody needs to shut it down.
Right, the fire department, it don't work.
Mine has a CMP thing on it.
I was just getting asked, somebody shuts his power off, he uses it all as ice cream.
And with the electrical disconnect, would it just be for homes or would be for anything new?
Well, new homes, and, and that, you know, you could require that for new business too, you know, if you wanted to. That's something you look, we could look into it and discuss that in another discussion.
Just something to discuss.
Right. A common regular meter enclosure is like thirty bucks, okay? One of the disconnect switches, two hundred amp, is like a hundred bucks, alright, so.
Well, I just calculated, it was a hundred and seventy-five dollars. It's a meter with a disconnect.
Yeah, with a meter trim and everything, so it's a hundred and seventy-five bucks.
And I have twenty locations for, where I can go from that meter panel.
You said something about a workshop, Fred?
Yeah, but we got a, our next meeting is gonna be the, I believe, the eighteenth of November. You wanna have a workshop two weeks prior, which, whatever the date will be, I can't see it.
The fourth of November, work with everybody.
I have a six-thirty appointment and doctor's appointment that day. Please council meeting. And that's council meeting.
And that's all it is, the comment on this electrical stuff, is I was with, yeah, state electrical inspector.
Yep.
And they got a whole list of new stuff coming out in January.
Yeah, and it's gonna be...
It's gonna scare you.
But the disconnect is one important.
The fourth is council, and the fifth is election day.
Okay. We, we don't know if we're gonna have business on the eighteenth. Right now, I don't have any, anybody that's put any applications in, so... I know you won't be there, but, so, we can tentatively schedule a workshop on the eighteenth, and then if we have business following that, then we will, or we can do the business first, and then have a workshop after.
Works for me.
So the eighteenth.
The eighteenth workshop.
Workshop, no matter what, and then if we have business, we'll take care of that as well.
That's six-thirty.
That's six-thirty.
You get a bench, I want one of them, yeah?
I got a jar of whiskey we need to drink.
I'll tell you what, with the training that Fred put in everybody's packet, there's gonna be...
Pretty much, whether I get a few things in the workshop.
There's gonna be training up at Newery on October thirty-first.
We can tell.
No, I don't, I, but I just...
I can't get off from here. Fred needs to go, he's wanting to, from eight-thirty to two fifteen.
Why don't they always do this?
Because they don't think about the work in there.
Because they get paid for what they work.
I'm not retiring, ever. I like working.
I retired nine years ago.
I was tired on that.
We have a motion to adjourn.
I made a motion to adjourn.
It's already did.
I second it.
All in favor? Let's go.